At your earlier meeting today with visioning. So we're back on, on, on schedule with our regular board meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation for Bocke Carter, our car marshal, followed by the place of allegiance.
Ms. Gray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us. We thank you for watching over us and keeping us, protecting us all and our families. Pray for the mayor and commissioners to now as they conduct the business of the town. Pray for our employees. We also ask that you be to those who have suffered loss over the past few days, all of their families that are struggling and suffering. And we thank you for your blessings and continue to watch over us for your holy and precious name. We pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands where my nation under God in its individual liberty and justice for all. First item on agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
We have a motion. We have a say.
Say.
All in favor? Seeing everyone voted yes, our mayor pro tem, Dr. Kimon McGray, is at home resting from her recent surgery. She was at our visionary meeting earlier today and she'll be commenting by phone and voting also. Official comments, we'll go right into manager's report under tab one.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, our citizens in the audience, and our citizen union on our live stream. For the February third manager's report on the community corner, we have the Mid Carolina Senior Games. We have been officially invited as a municipality to come out to Methodist College between April ninth and May fifteenth. This is an annual event put on by the Mid Carolina Regional Council on Care. And it's the mid senior, it's the Mid Carolina Senior Games. There's badminton, basketball, golf, horseshoes, all kind of games for our senior citizens. The Parks and Rec staff has initiated a new, pretty cool program tied to allowing businesses to advertise on fencing at our sporting events for $440 for profit businesses and $400 for nonprofits. You get a four by four aluminum display. We have received a sponsorship from Freddie, so Coopers, you are on the clock. Hope Mills Chamber has the first chamber breakfast of the year, January twenty eighth, the Harmony Hope Mills. They're held on the fourth Tuesday of every month, and it provides opportunities to network with other local businesses. Members of the police department held with their families that participated in the 5K at Methodist University in support of victims of human trafficking. The second page of the manager's report is an entire page dedicated to parks and recreation, spring and summer events. You can find everything on there for our Independence Day kickoff. If you have a food truck you want to register, our spring litter sweep is on there, the Hope Mills Cotton Trail vendors are asked to apply there. Opening day for baseball is Saturday, April fifth. The shred event, household hazardous waste. There's a lot of events and a lot of information about a lot of activities going on. This will be a running page throughout the spring and summer. The third page of the manager's report is an update on Hope Mills Municipal Projects from the closure of Johnson Street tied to CSX road maintenance with the hills CGI. They did the branding videos for the town. We've engaged them for a banner program that allows us to have banners throughout the town on different utility poles. The next page is commercial and residential project updates. Freedom Lay is under construction. Residential development is well underway. And the last two pages of the manager's report are updates for the current NCBOT construction projects happening throughout the region. That concludes the manager's report. If they were ever, thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. As you can see, our manager's report has gotten larger. And when people ask all the time, what's going on in Hope Mills? Why Hope Mills? Well, you can see it in our manager's report, the community corner. All the events that are happening in parks and rec. Tremendous amount of, of opportunity. Look at all of the municipal projects that are going on in Hope Mills, there's three pages of them. When we're looking at plans and we're looking at what's going on with projects, you'll find those all in this manager's report, which is now up to five pages of information for our community. Any questions about the manager's report before we move on to board member comments? Okay, I'm going to start with Commissioner Lake.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing that I want to comment on, and that is cleaning the bank off of Walgreens in Hope Mills, where it's under.
It is.
If I can update, Mayor, actually, and I'll give the game ball to our planner, Emily Wyman, we heard back from Walgreens today. They have a plan of action tied to specifically cleaning up that hill. I think you were talking about at the vision meeting, we're going to take the hill. I didn't want to update you guys then, but we have actually heard back from Walgreens that it had been a nuisance in our town for quite some time. And we owe it to our planning department as well as our code enforcement department with their diligence. And we actually are moving forward with that intersection being cleaned up.
Are they going to clean it up?
I think.
Yes.
Okay. Because I tell you, at our spring cleanup this year, I was planning to take that deal with a group of Boy Scouts and we would clean it up. That thing has been an eyesore as a gateway to our community for several years. It's full of trash, weeds. It's just not well kept at all. And sometimes if you want something done, you just got to go do it. So I'm really glad to hear Walgreens is going to clean the hill. Mr. Craver?
I have nothing to say other than good evening to all of you and thank you for coming.
Mr. Marley?
Mr. Marley, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Swole?
Thank you, Mayor. Did anyone else envision him with a rifle, with a bayonet attached, taking the hill? Because I know that's what popped in my head when he said he was taking the hill. Other than that, it's good to see everyone in our audience and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor pro tem, Dr. Kimon McGray.
Good evening to everyone. I have no additional remarks to this time.
Thank you. Then it comes back to me. First, I would like to welcome our Cumberland County Chair, Kurt Devier. Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Chair is here. Also Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Patel is here with us. And I'm glad to see that they're here because I'm going to comment about a board retreat that I attended at the Crown last week. It was the strategic planning retreat for Cumberland County at the Crown. And it was well, well attended. But I wanted to read something. I want to read this memo because it really resonates with what we're doing here in Hope Mills with our visioning and our comprehensive strategic plan that tonight we finally got started. It's been a work in progress for years to define our vision, our mission, what we do for the community, looking at a five-year plan. We started that tonight. But I want to read this. Dear fellow commissioners, welcome to our 2025 strategic planning retreat. This gathering is crucial as we work together to shape Cumberland County's future. Our success depends on strong teamwork and collaboration. I'm going to stop right there and say, there are nine municipalities in Cumberland County and all of us will work together and collaborate together. During this retreat, we will strengthen our working relationships while developing clear, actionable strategies that serve our community, communities' needs. Each of your perspectives is vital to our planning process. Through open dialogue and mutual respect, we can create innovative solutions for the challenges facing our county. I look forward to productive sessions that will benefit all Cumberland County residents. Sincerely, Kurt Devier, Chairman. The reason I'm reading this tonight is not because either one of them are here, it's because I looked at this in a holistic view. I looked at it as one team, all the municipalities in Cumberland County working together, having open dialogue together, respecting each other, and above all, seeking innovative solutions to move us forward as a county. That's what resonates with me. And that's why I wanted to read this tonight as part of my managers, I'm not manager, as part of my board comments. The other event I attended also on Thursday was the Board of Education meeting greet, which was an excellent opportunity to meet with our school board, our newly elected school board members, and to take away and listen to some of the ideas and innovative approaches that they have to keep our schools safe. It touches me when I am in a meeting like this, and it was full, believe me, it was completely full. And I hear from administrators and from other district members of how we approached the SRO issue in our schools in Hope Mills and how successful this program has been and how thankful every day that the children, the staff and the teachers in all of these schools are glad that our Hope Mills police officers stand ready every day. I didn't hear that from just one person. I heard it from a lot of people that were there. That's who we are. It's what we do as a community. And a lot of that credit goes to everybody that's, that's here, that works diligently every day for the betterment of our Hope Mills community. I just wanted to share that. There's comments tonight. And we'll move on to proclamation, recognizing Black History Month. That's under tab two. Proclaiming February 2025 as Black History Month in the town of Hope Mills, whereas Black History Month is observed every February throughout the United States to celebrate and recognize our role and contributions of Black and African Americans in our history and culture. Black History Month was created as an opportunity to celebrate achievements by Black Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. Each February, we take stock of the cumulative efforts undertaken by Black people individually and collectively, and whereas many leaders and visionaries have led the movement to celebrate the Black experience and advocate for freedom, justice, love and overall well-being. And whereas the town of Hope Mills acknowledges and rejects the long history of institutional and structural racism toward African Americans in the United States and calls attention to the continued need to confront racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic values. We endeavor to dismount the systematic barriers set up to hinder Black people's ability to achieve equality, opportunity and social mobility and to focus on systematic change that prioritizes the dignity and power of Black people. And whereas the town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners honors the rich heritage, extraordinary legacies and ongoing accomplishments of Black and African Americans and joins the force of other local, state and national leaders, we celebrate, celebrate Black and American, American excellence. We celebrate and recognize Black and African American communities not only this month, but 365 days a year. Now therefore, I Jesse Belltires, Mayor in the town of Hope Mills, Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the town of Hope Mills on this third day of February. Our next proclamation is item B, recognizing, recognizing National Wear Red Day, and that's under tab three, Commissioner Swole will read that.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's interesting, I'm reading over it before I speak it to everyone, and I actually hit the bill on some of this stuff, so it's quite concerning, but here we go. National Wear Red Day proclamation, whereas National Wear Red Day is observed annually on the first Friday in February, whereas heart disease and stroke kill one in three women, and whereas women can take action to protect their heart health and reduce heart disease by preventing and controlling risk factors for the disease such as smoking, high blood pressure, obesity, physical inactivity, age and various others. I'm bad shape. Whereas women's health remains a priority for families, communities and governments. And whereas women need to make health, heart health, a priority for themselves, their families, and take action to improve their heart health. Now therefore, I Jesse Belltires, Mayor of Hope Mills, do proclaim Friday, February seventh, 2025, Wear Red Day in the town of Hope Mills, and encourage all citizens to work together to promote and improve the health of women and increase understanding of heart disease. There you go, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item under items C, Cumberland County Community Development, under tab four. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Good to see you. And if I had known that the chairman and Commissioner Patel were coming, I would have asked them to present this for me, but I was off, before I get started, I want to introduce some of my faculty. One year I have Ms. Hendricks in, some of you have probably met Devin Newton in the past. And so Devin went on to another position in another state. And so Ms. Hendricks is Ms. News' replacement, so she is now our community service manager. As well as Ms. Richon Emanuel, she is a finance accountant at the county, and also she's starting up this adventure for community development. They have Ms. Sedgwick Turner, who is a strategic project analyst with the county manager's office through the Art Program, who's helping with some technical assistance with community development. So the last time that we were before you, I think Ms. Emanuel was actually the one that came before you, was to present the urban county designation back in, I think it was August, September timeframe. And so as you already are aware, of our nine municipalities, eight of them, minus the city of Fayetteville because they do their own, their own programming, are part of the collaborative for community development at the county level. So the purpose of me coming for you tonight is to talk briefly about the consolidated plan. And so you heard us come before you to talk about our annual action plan, our CAPR, but the consolidated plan is what we do every five years. And so it's our strategic plan. And so we do an annual action plan. They are basically the short-term goals of the long-term goal, which is the con plan. And so we are in the midst of that now. The current con plan that we're in covered from 2020 to 2025. This next plan will cover from 2025 through 2030. And so in that process, it requires that we, HUD requires that we do quite a bit of community involvement because the community knows what they need. And so there are, there are national objectives that we have to hit, but to make sure that we're meeting that, meeting that standard, we need to make sure that we're including our, our citizens, our residents. So to do that, a press release went out about a week and a half ago. Our PR department is actually working on getting out posters with QR codes on them to the various municipalities in our county facilities, so folks can just take their phones, go write the survey, and it takes about five minutes to complete. Very, very simple survey. It's a confidential survey, so we don't share any of the people's information, but we do use that as a data source to make sure that we are targeting specific needs in the community. And so in that consolidated plan, there are four main sections. There's a needs assessment, which actually comes from that survey result. And then there's a market analysis. And so the market is what it is. We can go out there and we can do data, data warehousing, but then we need to have the needs assessment, the public comment, along with that market analysis to really get a clear picture on what's needed. We compare that to the previous con plan and see if we've made any strides, or we could go back and look at some of our old goals and reassess how we did in the previous five-year term. And that's when our CAPR comes into, comes into the picture. So every year, the end of the year, we do a CAPR as well. And that CAPR is basically our report card. How did we do with that annual action plan throughout the year? Did we need it? Did we miss some things? And what do we do to reassess or move forward in the next year? And then finally, I wanted to talk briefly about some of our programs because I'd be remiss if we came in here and didn't talk about what we actually do. And so the biggest, I'll cover a couple of things. The biggest program we have within community development is our housing rehab program. And so we have two iterations of that. The first is a, what we, what we call colloquially in office, a full rehab. And that requires, it's a deferred forgivable loan, and we actually utilize the equity in the individual house. If that person stays in that house for the life of that loan, you never pay a dime. And so it's really about keeping folks in their home because we know that your home is primarily the biggest source of wealth, that you have generational wealth. And so we try to keep people within, in their homes. Graciously, the Board of County Commissioners last April, they enhanced our, our minor program of the housing rehab program, and I took a request to them and asked whether they could increase it from 10,000 to 30,000, and that was unanimously approved. And so the, the minor rehab program, we actually, is a grant program, and it actually provides up to $30,000, no cost, no type of lien against your home, but it allows us to do those health and safety needs in the home, weatherization, mold, mildew, asbestos, lead, those types of things. And again, no cost or outstanding cost that has to be, you know, a certain period that you have to be in the home. It's just a grant process. We also, I see in the audience, we have our COC Chair, Ms. Debbie Brown. And so we work with the COC as well, and we get a funding source for that as well to deal with homelessness and HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System in Cumberland County as well. And so that's a lot of information, and so I'm going to be quiet now, and I will try to take any questions that, that you may have.
Do you have any questions from the board? Commissioner Swole?
So on this sheet that we have, this information sheet for grants, it also talks about affordable housing now, are, so you supply grants to, for affordable housing? Is that in line?
So typically, so we have a CHODO, and so we have Kingdom Community, Kingdom Communities Development Corporation. And so we actually worked with our CHODO to construct affordable housing. But I think it goes without saying that there's a need for affordable housing. And when you have one entity that's really doing that work, and for the city of Fayetteville, they have like Capetap community as well, but there's still a need for more affordable housing. And so you probably all heard about this, this is a shameless plug, you probably heard as well that our county was selected to participate in our, the R-C-R Homes program with the UNC School of Government. And so we have our first meeting at Cohort on February eighteenth to nineteenth. And so the purpose is we hope to get some best practices from across the state because what we've seen is we all are kind of experiencing the same types of issues with affordable housing. But we hope to share some things that we've done in Cumberland County with them as well. But I hope to really come back during that process and let you all know what's going on and what strides we're making in that particular avenue.
Yeah, because I mean, we have housing, it's just not affordable. I mean, I'm glad I bought my house while I was stationed here because there's no way I could afford a $300,000 house, and that's what a lot of these houses are going for nowadays.
Right, and I try to make a point that affordable housing, you know, all housing is affordable, but it's just somebody, it's just somebody, you know, it's, it's affordable at your particular point.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Craver?
The homelessness prevention. Devin, before she left, told me that we, in order to get that, that we should have always are supposed to have filled out the, the grant in January. Are we too late for that? Is that, grant still open, what we can apply for?
Are you talking about public services?
I, I think so.
We have not, so I don't think you missed it. So, because we are in the process now of putting out our public services applications. And so I'll make sure, if that's what you're talking about, I'll make sure that gets to you.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you so much. I'm glad we didn't miss that.
No, ma'am. Any other comments from the board? Okay. We look forward to you coming back and updating us.
I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
You are, I mean, there's, it's almost every week, there's a conversation about affordable housing in communities. Of course, everything's affordable to someone, but is it affordable to everyone? And it's a community conversation. It's not just one location. It's not one municipality. It's a regional conversation. And it's, and it's a challenge to address, and it's going to be a challenge to work together. It's like Chairman, like Cumberland County Board Chairman Kurt Devier said, it's looking for innovative ways to address affordable housing. And you don't do that unless you have a collaboration, a very strong collaboration at, at the table, looking for solutions. So after your meeting, can you bring, can you bring some opportunities back to us and update us? Look forward to it. We'd love to hang you back, sir.
I thank you.
Thank you for what you've done for our community. Okay, next up. Who have we here? We have Project Freedom, Empowering Period Dignity from Amber Johnson. Amber, welcome. Now, I have something here in my hand, Amber. I just want to make sure you're the same person that City View writer wrote about, by the name of Morgan Case, this is a beautiful article, I'm going to say, before you even start. You know, Meet the High Schooler Fighting Period Poverty in Cumberland County Schools. I was inspired when I read this article from City View, and I look forward to your presentation and comments to support this excellent school program.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate you as long as the community, Commissioner, so.
Have you watched them? Yeah.
I appreciate y'all so much. Y'all do so much for the community. I see. So good evening to our wonderful mayor, commissioners and our other fellow community members that need to help. My name is Amber Johnson, and I am a proud senior at Grace Creek High School. I stand before you as an ambassador Girl Scout and a proud member of this community to discuss an initiative that is very close to my heart, my Girl Scout Gold Award project, Project Freedom, Empowering Period Dignity. Period poverty is a pressing issue that impacts students and families in Hope Mills and beyond. Every day, individuals face barriers to accessing affordable menstrual products, leading to missed full days, diminished self-esteem and even health complications. Additionally, the stigma surrounding menstruation discourages open conversation and perpetuates feelings of shame. Through Project Freedom, I aim to create lasting change by addressing both the practical and the societal aspects of this issue. Now I will discuss my recent efforts. These last couple months, I have taken significant steps to advance this mission. On December eighth, I hosted an educational workshop focused on menstrual health and hygiene. Participants gained valuable resources and knowledge, with many expressing newfound confidence in addressing their menstrual health. I also volunteered at a community day where I engaged with families to raise awareness about period poverty and its effects on November ninth. On December eighteenth, I shared vital information with the community during the winter showcase event hosted by Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, reaching a broader audience and fostering meaningful conversations about this critical issue. Project Freedom consists of four key components. Number one, educational workshops. I have already conducted several workshops and plan to hold more to break down the stigma, foster understanding and. foster understanding, and empower individuals to view menstruation as a natural and vital part of life. Number two, gap closets. I aim to establish Girls Against Period Poverty Closets in local middle and high schools. These closets will provide free and accessible menstrual products, ensuring no student misses school due to lack of supplies. Sustainability through county advocacy. To ensure a lasting impact, I am collaborating, collaborating with Senator Applewhite to propose a county budget allocation for the purchase and replacement of menstrual products. Number four, community outreach. Efforts like November 9th, the Health Fair, and the upcoming podcast I have with Dr. Cooper are designed to spark meaningful conversations and connect with family with resources. This initiative is more than just providing products. It's about fostering equity, dignity, and awareness. Menstrual health affects education, public health, and economic stability, making it a community issue. As leaders of Hope Mills, your support is crucial. Endorsing this project, connecting with me, with schools, and organizations, or advocating for sustainable funding, would demonstrate that our town is committed to equity and empowerment for all of its residents. Together, we can ensure that no one in Hope Mills faces barriers or shame because of menstruation. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I look forward to working with you to make Project Freedom last for a lifetime.
If you want to come down and go take your posters and turn around, is that all you can see them? Let's get a picture. Because these are really.
And I can also take questions at this time of year.
Mayor, I have a question. Okay, it was a very good presentation. I took pictures of your little displays there as well. Now, you were talking about you're, you're going to have like a closet in the schools for different menstrual aid products. Are you doing any kind of like fundraiser, or are you reaching out to the community to have people donate stuff in?
I am, so in fact, on March 1st and 2nd, at Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, I will.
I'm going to write this down, March 1st and 2nd.
At Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, I will be hosting a collection drive. It'll be for two days. It'll start at 11:00 a.m. and it'll end at 1:00 p.m. And so what items we're asking for is pads, sanitary wipes, unscenting, as well as sanitizers, just anything that is hygiene related, because we want to make sure that the girls that are receiving these items have as much as they can when they go home.
Now, would it help if maybe we put a box in our lobby at Town Hall? That way we can, as the town, have citizens drop it off? And if you leave your information with the town manager or someone, that way we can get in contact with you to drop it off to you.
Absolutely, that would mean a lot. I appreciate you that.
So, let's do that, town manager.
And we can also, if you have a flyer or something, we can actually roll this into the manager's report and make it a town-wide effort for child solicitors for support for this area.
Yes, yes. Now, I would like to ask also, former Commissioner Brilley Mitchell, you know that guy sitting there? You know, he has, he has the end on all the churches in Hope Mills. Wouldn't it be great if one of the churches in Hope Mills offered a collection site? Wouldn't it be great? Okay. Anybody want to say something? Oh, yeah. If he says it's done, it's done. Before Amber leaves, I just wanted to make sure that I read this right. It said the gap faucets are the final step in Johnson's Girl Scout Gold Award project, titled Project Freedom Empowering Period Dignity. And after graduating spring, she hopes to use the experience she's gained by teaching others about period dignity, as she pursues a degree in psychology, specifically studying adolescents' disorders. I read that from the City View article. I thought it was inspiring when I, when I read it. Now, I'll just read it out loud, so it's twice. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comments. First up is, looks like Clark. I'm not, S-H-D-L-E-T. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right. Therefore, is it Clark?
Uh, James Clark.
So, James Clark.
Yeah, listen, my time's starting, so I just wanted to go, are you James Clark? You can call me, that's fine. Listen, the point is that I am frustrated because I've been trying to help. I don't usually come up here and throw stones, and I have tried to help folks out, but when they don't want help, what else am I supposed to do? You want to sit there again, wave your hand like a little kid, information, misinformation? You don't think, you see your information's on the website. I'm telling you, it is not. There is no real news in Fayetteville anymore. City View is the best thing we get for news. If you don't have that, Facebook is not an authoritative source, so we go to the website. Your website's still broken. I've been trying to help you with that, okay? Schedule a meeting. You go in there, put it on your calendar. Look at it for calendar. Your calendar doesn't have any of these meetings and information like the commissioners' meetings. And so what are we left to do? With misinformation, disinformation, let their own devices, okay? How are we supposed to fix this? Where's the back date information of the town manager's report, meaning the previous topics? The only thing that's live on the website now is what he just gave you. How am I supposed to know what else is going on? I should have been here, okay? Yeah, I can dig down because I'm a little smarter than the average bear of looking into the historical record, but that's not the point. The information should be there. It should be available. And this is my principle. This is what I do. I've talked with that man and tried to help in terms of spearheading his knowledge management, knowledge information, okay? But you guys have that information. You guys just told him to do something. Well, how about you tell him to fix the website? He's been promising it for four years. Now, blame the previous commissioners because y'all were here for that four years ago, okay? Where's your strategic plan for the town of Hope Mills? I asked him, and he said it's on the county page. That doesn't do me any good. That's just pushing the can down the road. That's not taking responsibility for your actions, good or bad, is it? I don't want to have to come and start doing the deep dive, that's right, deep dive, dig into all of this, okay? The break in the median between the crop on Hope Mills Road in front of the Food Line and Waffle House, was that because of the lease the Food Line has? Why is that not on your town manager's report? And if you don't know, then I expect you to tell him to call the county. Ask the county, where is that break? Because NC DOT doesn't show where that median break is. How are we supposed to learn this? And so we sit in a period of ignorance and frustration and anger kickoff because there is misinformation and disinformation, and you aren't telling us, you aren't helping us, and that's the problem. And the last thing is, I will sue if you ever impede my First Amendment rights. I will sue. And you need to check yourself and make sure you know what the limitations are of my First Amendment rights, what I can and cannot say, and how loud or loud I can be, especially when the meeting hasn't even started. You need to take that on board. And for my law enforcement brothers, qualified immunity breaks down when you violate it. Any questions?
Mr. Clark, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that on our town website, if you go to the main page, at the very top of our main page, if you pull it up now, if you find it, you're going to see a link called Engage Hope Mills. It is a, it is a link for citizens to fill out, and any concerns, suggestions, recommendations, or questions you have will come directly to the board and the town manager. That link is active. It is right there. It's at the very top of our website.
And I've been here a couple of times telling you the exact same thing, and it still hasn't changed. And that's my frustration.
We will look into every action that you brought up tonight.
And that's why I think you're a lying, political, smart dude, and I'm frustrated because I voted for you, okay? I voted for you.
Please, sir, don't, 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 don't.
I can.
Don't challenge me like that.
I can.
Because I am not a liar.
I can, and you are.
I am not.
Your actions show it. That's right.
We're done, sir. We're done.
I have a, the break in the roadway. So I actually had to email Division Six Planning because I'm on the FAMPO board, because even at the FAMPO meeting, the NC DOT people there had no idea what I was even talking about. So I had to email some people. So, good afternoon, Commissioner Sroll. I reviewed the corridor to determine the work zone area you may have been inquiring about during the FAMPO tack meeting. Based on my review, the median work near the access points of Taco Bell Pizza Hut and Zaxby's Waffle House along North Main Street in Hope Mills was identified. Based on coordination with District Two Engineer Office, work is underway to allow a signalized median break, median break to increase access to the adjacent developments. This work is being done under encroachment by others and is not a DOT project. So normally, it wouldn't be something that we would get information on. That's why I had to go digging for it, because even at FAMPO, and they control a lot of the, you know, projects, but this is their answer. So if this is not the area we were referring about, please abide. But that was the answer.
And ma'am, I thank you very much because that is exactly what I would expect or request my town commissioner to do. If you don't know, you go find somebody and you can get the answer. To leave it off the town manager's report is a travesty. I mean, that affects everybody coming into Hope Mills. I can't get anybody from Fayetteville to come visit, eat down here because of the traffic. And now we're going to add another stoplight. If that's not a good answer, if you guys agree with it, then you're sitting here saying you're complying. You're complicit in the crime. If you think it's wrong, you push it yourself, you poke us to the county guy, or you point it to the state legislator and senator. These are folks need to talk to to stop this, to get a groundswell of support. But to sit down and be, well, it's beyond my control, I can't do it, then you're wrong as the day is long.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate you, sir.
Next, former Commissioner Brilley Mitchell.
I'm going to call an audible. Board of Commissioners, Mayor, town staff, and citizens. Now, for listening to the young lady's presentation, this is an opportunity for us to champion, become shareholders and stakeholders in a project that our young leaders will all benefit from. This is something that we all need to get behind. And I will make sure that the information is get out there on some of the websites, some of the media sites that's out there, request a donation to support this project. And I can tell you, young lady, that the ones in Hope Mills, it's 91%. We got you. And I reject our local elections. When we're citizens come before you all, we shall also come prepared to bring solutions to get involved in our community, sign up for the committees. It involve, raise a red flag when you see something wrong. Don't wait to this meeting. Get into the town manager. Time to do the research and then come to meet and ask for a follow-up if need be. That makes it much easier to get you the answer that's required and needed so you can walk out here as a happy town. As a former commissioner, when I saw it up there, one of the things that I always believed in doing is made, made my decision based on fight and truth. And I do believe that y'all have done the same thing. But you only going to be effective as the information that you receive. And I can tell you, everybody thinks that these highways that need to be cleaned up is our fault and our responsibility, but it is not. DOT controls a lot of the streets, and trust me, he gets it from all the time. I say, hey, this is your town. You got a dirty town. It's time to clean it up. And he's working on a beautification campaign to involve, to involve our citizens. I tell you, let's take ownership. Let's invest in Hope Mills. We need to get on a beautification campaign because this is a beautiful town. It's an important town, and we can do better and make better of our community. I encourage all citizens to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, former Commissioner Brilley Mitchell. Our last speaker for the night is Mr. Douglas M-O-D-D-E.
Yeah, Douglas Moody.
Moody, okay. And want to make sure, I'm not really great with names, but I welcome you, sir.
Cool Moody, that's me, okay. Let's see, my name's Douglas Moody. I helped develop the 2030 Plan for the land zoning for Cumberland County, southwest Cumberland County. And then there was also the northern area where Eastover was, and they had a plan there. On both plans, they had an F-2 tornado shelter in that plan. Now, we scrapped that plan in 2019, and we did a conjunction with Hope County and us for the emergency operations. Now, what happened to my tornado shelters? They just got scrapped to the side, and I know we're putting in probably Sheriff Anex, the fire department, going down Chicken Creek Road, we're accessing to I-95. Now, that's in the plan. But my tornado shelters just disappeared. Now, your predecessor, the mayor before you, I raised this concern, and I asked them when they designed that fire department, would it withstand an F-2 tornado? Never got a reply. Then I went to the Board of Commissioners for Cumberland County. I've gone to them three times in writing. I didn't get a reply. And I've gone up to the fifth ward, you know, like, hey, I'm here to talk to you guys. I built, I made this plan. No response. So now I'm bringing it up to the city of Hope Mills, because they can take a look at F-2 tornado shelter, and we could make it into a rec center, we can put it half underground if we want, you know, look into it. So we got a place for our kids. If we really come up with that. F-5 hurricane coming in, we got a place to go for our citizens, at least somebody. An emergency operations center with a radio, that means something. And they're tearing down the Crown Coliseum, and that had a shelter in the basement. It was like four stories down, and, you know, and we had radio equipment and a shower and everything. It's gone, they're going to tear it down. So now we have, we have nothing, to my knowledge, for Cumberland County. So we have something that we can develop here for the citizens of Hope Mills and southwest Cumberland County, and I hope they look over at Eastover and also for the city of Fayetteville. All right, thank you, sir.
Well, before you go, I appreciate now what you've said because my predecessor didn't share any of that conversation with me as an incoming mayor. I don't have an answer, and I will tell you I don't, but I will give you an answer to your question. And as far as the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, you have the chairman who is sitting there. You have a new Cumberland County Board of Commissioner, Commissioner Patel. And beside the chairman, you have also a new Cumberland County Board of Commissioner in the Heights. So there's three of them sitting right there. I'll talk to them. On your way out, you grab them while they're right here, and I'm sure they'll tell you the same thing, that if they don't have an answer, they'll get you an answer. Because that is an important part, and I invite you brought it up to us.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I was about to add something. I do understand that your F-2 tornadoes are typically tied to wind speeds about 157 miles per hour. I do know that our public safety facility is a Level Four facility, and our proposed community center at the golf course is supposedly a Level Four facility to be able to become a shelter. We can look into ensuring that that will handle those type of F-2 tornadoes, but that's something we can next to research, because that project is probably under design, but if there's some things we can incorporate, that's something we can.
Incorporate an emergency operations center with radio, so if it does come down, we can just walk in there and put a switch.
No, I do know our public safety facility is our EEOC. And so what I want to do is mirror the Level Four requirements with the F-2 to make sure they coincide, but that's something we can.
And they didn't get any sponsorship from the mayor, that's what I'm saying. All right, thank you. Before you.
I have a problem.
Go ahead. Mr. Sroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, my last duty assignment while I was still in the Army was in the Midwest, Fort Leonardwood, Lost in the Woods, for those who know. We were very frequented by tornadoes, and one of the things is, even with tornado buildings, if you're at home, there's no way, there's no chance you're going to make it to there. So even though we have the buildings, that means you're going to have people on the road trying to get to that building. So this area is a little bit, it's, it's not as frequent as the Midwest, but I think it's. but I think it's still, uh, it's a good, it's a good idea to have at least the building rated for it, but I don't foresee it actually being accessed as quickly as you would hope it would.
Well, I'm looking at an F-five hurricane coming in, going to direct his ear. And then we're inland, so the people from Carolina Beach, all these other places, they're going to come inland. And they're going to say, well, we're going to send them up to Raleigh. That was a part of the Hope County plan. They got to put them in hotels and motels, and the windows blow out. It's not my fault. Okay.
Before you go, is this the correct phone number you put on here?
Um, I hope so. Nine one zero six four 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 one one five.
Oh, no, it's a different one. Uh, just make sure that, that our clerk actually wired gets your phone number, and one of us will be contacting you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you have anything else? Any other thing? Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Before I move on to the Senate agenda, I did want to recognize Cumberland County Board of Commissioner Henry Tyson. I saw him come in earlier, and then I was involved in a couple items, but I want to make sure that, uh, that I recognize that you're here with us tonight, sir, and welcome. The Senate agenda is next. Have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? Seeing no one opposed, Mayor Pro Tim votes affirmative. Motion carries. The Senate agenda is approved as presented. We move on to old business. Our, uh, bylaws of the Hope Mills Economic Development Committee under Tab Seven is back on the agenda again, and I will give this one to Chancellor.
Uh, Mayor, before we move forward, I would like to also recognize District Six, City of Fayetteville, City Councilman Derek Thompson is with us. Um, and personally, as manager, um, I do think that is a, it is a very good sign to our public that you have City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County officials at our meetings, that you're announcing your attendance at their endeavors. I was also present, uh, at the meeting agreed with school board. I do think that that sends a message to our citizens that we are interested and, and actively working to push this region forward. We do have an affinity for Hope Mills, but we want everyone to know we're working with our counterparts in this county to push this region forward.
You know, I just, you know, Chancellor, I just, uh, I just got to get my fellow mayors to, to start attending as well. I just need to start getting them to show up.
I, I know that the meeting schedules do, um, um, kind of conflict, but as manager, I'm going to start making myself present as well. I do think it is a good sign at their meetings that they see us and, and probably accept the, the support of their endeavors as well. Um, as we get to the Economic Development, um, Committee's update, this is related to two amendments they were making to the bylaws. Um, they're tied to us, uh, switching out one of the voting members, um, becoming the county joint planer with a staff member for public works, and us also streamlining the language for term limits. And so that is something that we have, and we're asking for your consideration for approval to see. And those are the only amendments to the bylaws.
Okay. Any, uh, questions from the board?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the amended bylaws of the Hope Mills Economic Development Committee.
Okay, motion, have a second? All in favor? Everybody has voted affirmative. Mayor Pro Tim, Dr. McCray votes affirmative. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, review and approval of the town of Hope Mills social media policy for elected and appointed officials at under Tab Eight.
Um, I guess I'll start this one off, too. Um, as we're gearing up to streamline and update our internal social media policy, we felt the need to stay in line with other municipalities who have policies for elected officials, appointed boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, this is tied to use of personal or professional social media platforms, and I guess our town attorney will speak to this at the end.
Okay?
Yeah, and, um, essentially what we've tried to do here is, um, you know, put some guidelines in place and some, some recommendations as to how to handle a social media account, uh, while still, you know, staying within the bounds of the First Amendment, you know, allowing public officials to comment and engage in that process. So that's what we try to do here, to do your questions, yes.
Thank you, Dan. I would like to say that there was two policies that we were working on together. One of them was the Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics for Elected Officials, and the board approved that, that policy December sixteenth. We were trying to get them both approved at the same time, but we had some review on the, on the media policy that delayed that. Because we, originally, that was the plan, was to, was to do them both at the same time. But now that we've slid them up, the, uh, social media policy is now before the board. And it's something we probably should have done a lot, a long time ago, of which we had done it some years ago. I think it's needed. I think it's important, especially in our roles as elected officials, of what we can post and what we shouldn't post. All of us are entitled to our opinions. We are. It's how we represent those. And probably the biggest takeaway from the media policy is the conduct that we display when we're on social media sites. Are we representing ourselves individually, or do we represent ourselves as an elected official? So with that said, do I have a motion to approve the social media policy as presented?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the town of Hope Mills social media policy for elected and appointed officials.
We have, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion before a call for the vote? No discussion? Okay. How's everybody feel? Good?
Good.
All right. Was that a vote, yes? All right.
I think, um, so everybody knows I took my social media page down because of a lot of things that I don't want to talk about right now. But I do share information from the town on my personal page. So in my, from reading this policy, best practices, I should not share anything about the town of Hope Mills on my personal Facebook page, or advertisements, or anything, or resharing. Because that's basically what I do. I do a lot of facts before commenting on people's things on social media or arguing, period. I don't do that. I share information. So best practices moving forward, I should not share anything because that's what this policy says. And I'm, I'm tired of that. I'm just clarifying. I should not be posting anything about the town on my personal page because I'm not going to create, uh, a town or public official page. And I, I just choose not to do that. So I should not reshare anything about the town on my page.
I'll, I'll say, I think it's, I think you can share things about the town on your personal page without implicating this policy. Um, but the general idea, and it was set forth by the, uh, US Supreme Court in a decision, uh, that they released last year, um, that, that I believe I've sent, but all, all public officials should read. Um, basically, the test for whether it's you're acting as public official is whether you're exercising your authority. So, you know, I think something as simple as sharing a, um, you know, an event or an upcoming meeting is not necessarily engaging in, you know, your job as a commissioner. Um, if you want to be on the extreme safe side, then, you know, best practice would be to avoid discussing town business. But I think that there's a distinction between just sharing an event coming up versus, um, you know, engaging public on a particular topic that may come before the board. So I, I, I think it would be permissible, and within the spirit of this policy, to share, saying, you know, upcoming meetings, upcoming events, things like that, on your personal page. If you have a, uh, page for your, uh, official page, you know, you, you may, best practice may be keeping those updates on your official page. But just by sharing, you know, an item that is related to the town of Hope Mills, I don't think you're creating a public record necessarily. So I know that's kind of a wishy-washy attorney answer, but, um, I think it kind of depends on the context of what you're sharing. I would say that sharing just an announcement that has already been issued by the town, and you're just sharing that is, is permissible.
Dr. McCray, was that, was that a good answer, or did you have more?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at number five. It says officials should consider the potential. It is not that we shouldn't, but it says just consider the potential impact of liking, sharing, retweeting, or commenting on any social media post regarding the town, its employees, constituents, other public officials, suppliers, vendors, or contractors. So to me, that says you should not even share anything about the town at all because that's basically what it said.
I, I think the spirit of it was before making a public post about something that, um, you know, for example, another public official, or employee, or contractor, that, you know, that everyone just sort of thinks through the implications of what does it mean for a public official to be making this statement? Uh, is, you know, I, I think it's not intended to be a, don't share anything about the town, don't comment on the town, but that particular provision is intended for it to be a, a, a sort of self-check before you post something. Just think through what the implications are. And I, I think that's the only, um, you know, that's, that's why it should consider not, you know, cannot discuss town business. I think the idea is just, uh, make sure you're thinking through the import and impact of potential comments you make on social media.
I think it also goes to how you're posting. Do you post as an individual? Be like myself. I would post as Jesse Bellbowers. Okay? Or I could post Jesse Bellbowers, Mayor of Hope Mills. Which one of those two represents this board and this town? Is it without mayor, or is it with my title? And I think that's where the difference comes in. Because when people see that, they see, well, if you posted just yourself, they say, well, that's a personal opinion of him as an individual. But when they see mayor of town of Hope Mills, then they believe or have the perception that I'm representing the town and this board. And I think that's probably the biggest spirit. Sometimes it gets a little bit this way, because this depends on how, of what's said. But I, but the main takeaway is just be mindful, they were all elected officials when we post comments on social media. Just be mindful of that. Commissioner Scola?
I have a, I guess, question and comment. So, all right, so like Dr. McCray was saying, item five, officials should consider the potential impact of liking, sharing, retweeting, or commenting on any, any social media post regarding the town, its employees, constituents, other public officials, suppliers, vendors, or contractors. So I'm not seeing that as a Parks and Rec is going to have something happen, let's go share. I see this as I'm mad at the town, and I want to share, and I want to have my piece. And I think that's where you still can't have, even as a, you know, not commissioner's role, as a juror's role, I think you still can't have that kind of, um... That's the word I'm looking for. Um, you, you, you're, you're still acting, even though you're not acting in an official position, it's still, um... Kind of, kind of disrespectful, I guess, I, I mean...
I think that's the intent of this section. You know, if you're considering the impact of saying, for example, uh, hey, we had a great event last Saturday, enjoyed seeing everyone there. Well, the impact of that is positive and good. So I, I would think that's probably one, you know, it's fine. Um, if you're going to say something like, you know, the town employees really dropped the ball on this thing, that might be something that you would consider and say, maybe I should. So I think this, uh, is, this should not be read, particularly this, uh, section five, as you're not allowed to talk about anything with the town. It's more just, hey, before you hit, before you hit that post button, give it a second.
Now, my, my follow-up question would be, um, I mean, this is just guidelines, and there, there's, not to say there has to be a, um, an effect that if you break the rules, you get, you know, a slap on the wrist, but, I mean, these are just guidelines.
These are guidelines, and, you know, there's nothing enforceable necessarily about this policy on an elected official. Uh, but it's intended to just kind of be a, a working document for, for guidelines and for best practices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just like my wife always tells me, taste your words before you speak them. Yes, or no? Commissioner Craver?
Um, I had an experience this past weekend on my political page. Um, there was a topic, and people were talking about it, and then someone else came on there and started asking me, well, did you want to give the girl softball team thirteen thousand dollars to go to the... Well, it went back and forth, not with me, but with the other people. And at the end, that person erased everything that they had said, plus what was responded back to them. Now, can that be... I mean, could that be come back on me as, um, eliminating something on my page when it wasn't me that deleted it?
I, I mean, I think if you're not the one doing the deleting, then you haven't taken any action. Uh, you know, the, the general concept is when you create a public post about a public topic on your governmental page, you're creating this sort of public forum for people to discuss that topic. And you can't restrict what people, I mean, you, within reason you can, but you can't restrict it based on viewpoint, things like that. And you can't delete someone's comment for, based on viewpoint. Now, if they delete their own comment, you have not taken any action. And, um, even if they inadvertently delete someone else, it, you know, it's, it's your conduct that would be at issue in a, you know, First Amendment-type plan, saying that, you know, you've blocked my access. But if you didn't delete it, someone else deleted their own comment, I don't see what you should do.
How can you tell the difference? Who deleted it?
I'm not a Facebook expert, so I don't know. Um, I'm sure there's some sort of metadata to that effect, but...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor? Everybody votes affirmative. Mayor Pro Tim votes affirmative. Motion passes. We have a new social media policy. Up next, under item C, oop, wrong, item B, approval of budget amendment number eighteen in the account of one hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars under Tab Nine. Almost jumped over you, Drew.
Don't do that. Almost. Okay, I do have a change, an amendment to my budget limit. When I...
What's that?
An amendment to my budget limit. So, um, everything on it is fine. Um, what this budget limit is doing is, is some of the current projects that we have finished, like the radios, the chapel parking lot, the splash pad, the basketball courts, um, those are all projects that we have finished. So this is kind of just, uh, firming up where a few of them needed a little bit of contingency money in order to complete. So it's allocating some of the interest income that we've gotten in our ARCA funds to cover, uh, those balances. We're adding a few things, um, to use our ARCA money for. One of them is the Lake Park parking lot design for forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. The, we bought those two pieces of property. The market, the contract is sitting on my desk, waiting for me to do the pre-audit, and I can't until this is approved. So we're going to use ARCA funds for that. And then the eighty-five thousand that we're going to do the one-time payment for the fire radios, that is using the rest of the radio money, adding the extra twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty in order to do the eighty-five thousand dollar payment in July of, uh, this year. So that will be in here. Uh, and another new thing that's on here is the fire antenna that we're going to be adding to the cell tower before, um, we sell the cell tower. The original quote or estimate that we had was ten thousand dollars. We talked about this at the last meeting. That number has now changed because we've got the actual quote on Friday. Ten thousand was just for the antenna. To install the antenna on the cell tower is a completely different story. So the actual quote to have the antenna installed is out to be, oh, here it is. Um, with tax, it's fifty-two thousand... fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. So the antenna itself again is around ten. To have it installed is going to be the fifty-two, three seventy-eight. But that includes sales tax. So the only thing I need to budget is forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. So I need to add to the ten thousand, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars so we can install the ten thousand dollar antenna. So that is my amendment to my budget amendment. The total budget amendment then becomes one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we can still use interest income that we've made off the ARCA funds. I know there's questions.
The increase on here is not the same what you just said?
It's not on there.
Yeah.
I just got this Friday.
An amendment to the amendment.
I'm admitting the amendment.
You don't have a printed sheet of it?
I didn't have, we were in here all afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to put that together.
Can you say that, I got the number for the install, what was the total number?
Okay, so if you're looking at the actual budget amendment next to fire antenna?
Yeah.
That ten thousand, that number should be forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five.
Forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five?
The total, instead of one forty-eight, three fifty, should be one eighty-seven, three twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
So that is actually what I'm asking for.
So that is what you're asking for, and that is all interest, correct?
We just made, you know, when you have that much money sitting in the bank account, we're still making over four percent.
Okay, so this is...
We're doing very well. I'm taking care of our money.
Okay. One of the questions I have is the fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty for the ballfield complex.
Yes, I can explain that. I asked Lamar about all this before I put them on here. We moved all the money from the ballfield complex to the tennis courts and the senior center. While that happened, there was two outstanding invoices that I hadn't counted for yet because they hadn't even come in. So after we moved that money, two more invoices came in that totaled this fifteen, six fifty that were good or just spent that I didn't have. So I have to go back and put that in that account. So that's what that is.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
May I make a motion to approve budget amendment number eighteen for one eighty-seven, three twenty-five?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing everybody votes yes. Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Drew. Now we'll move on to item C, consideration and approval of the contract extension for Whip O'Brien, tab ten. Chancellor has a...
Mayor, if you recall, and Commissioner, if you recall, we spoke about this at the department head retreat. We are requesting an addition of thirty thousand to get us to the end of this fiscal year. This is tied to the League of Municipalities grant program we have. If approved, this would bring our total investment into this program up to just sixty thousand with about six million in grant submissions. But this is to get us through January, I mean, through July, through the rest of this fiscal year so we can keep going. We actually have quite a few grant submissions we're gearing up with the Department of Grant and things of that nature. And so the thirty thousand that you gave us last year, we're getting to the end of that and we need additional, this additional amount to carry through the end of this fiscal year.
And we just received a grant here about last month.
Yes, I'm waiting on a due date, but I can't.
I know, but we've got one out of three right now.
Yes.
So it pays for itself.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, any questions about this item?
May I make a motion to approve the contract extension with Whip O'Brien?
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Okay, wait until Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray. Okay, seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is item D, consideration and approval to reclassify the positions of assistant fire marshal, crime analyst, and victim advocate within the town of Hope Mills, tab eleven. Leanne got this one. She's already up.
I've submitted a request for reclassification within our P system. First is the fire department. The chief has requested a reclassification of the assistant fire marshal from salary grade twenty-one to twenty-four. The reason being for that is that the rank of assistant fire marshal is the equivalent of a fire captain, yet it's in the same K class as the fire lieutenant. So this is just a correction, making sure it's in the correct K grade. The next two are within the police department. The first is reclassification of a civilian crime analyst, which is currently at salary grade twenty. With the additional responsibilities for maintaining the new servers, additional technical expertise is required. So we're actually asking for this position to have a title change as well, which would be to a sworn position as a law enforcement systems administrator. And the third is also reclassification of a civilian position. This one is for victim advocate, which is currently at K grade eighteen. The chief has made the request. Currently, a victim advocate does not have any resting authority or ability to carry a weapon. They are given a bulletproof vest and wish them the best of luck. And for safety purposes, it would take more sense, and I agree with the chief on that, to require them to be a sworn, to give them those authorities. And so the change within the pay grade from eighteen to nineteen is simply to make them even with the police officer position.
Leanne, is this, if the board approves these changes, will this go into effect tonight?
It'll be effective immediately.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Craver.
Every, every, this says that Chief Dollinger also recommends leaving the current unsworn victim advocate and unsworn crime analyst positions in the pay plan for future use should the needs of the department change. Is that, are we not creating two more positions here with two more staff?
See, these are not new positions. There were already people in these positions. They're simply reclassifying those roles and what K grades they're going to be in. The reason for, I recommend leaving them in the system, although they would have zero staff to them, the disposition would be available should they be needed in the future. Especially when you think about servers, there could potentially in the future be a need to add a crime analyst to support that. Maybe it needs more than one person. So just leaving them there, they're not creating new positions. They're just, rather than having to reapprove and re-add them every time you want to change back and forth or if needs be grow, it's not adding any positions.
If we left them there, would they be unfunded positions?
Correct, they wouldn't, yes. We're, yeah, they're not funded, no. It would just be the definitions are still there. Correct, yes. If you wanted to fill those, they would be additional positions then, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I do have a question, and I emailed the question to Leanne, but I want to make sure that the public hears it because they may have the same question or concern that I did. I had a question about the victim advocate position and going up to a salary grade of a nineteen. And just some of the, not some of the duties, a lot of the duties, only asking for a high school diploma. And it does talk about experience, but I thought it should at least require a bachelor's degree. But they did explain that to me and I just wanted to make sure that they explained that to the listening audience so that they can know, because I was scared to think that a lot of people would look at it and think the same thing that I did, that it should be at least a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, Protem, as you well know, I had the same concern too when I read it. You know, I went back and forth and I looked at the pay grade and that's the reason I asked what education requirements for the grade nineteen.
Right, so that's a BLAF, which is what the position would be, the requirement, requirement of this position as well.
So BLAF would be the only educational requirement.
Correct. Plus the additional training that comes with being in those positions, but no, yeah, high school diploma. Yeah, I think a lot of it too, that a lot of the duties and responsibilities of a victim advocate sound like social work and it's not really a social work position, which would require actually a master's degree, which Dr. McCray pointed out. It's more of a resource, a point of contact type of position, not technically social work that it is.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the grade nineteen police officer is not required to have a college degree. Yeah. And when I saw her comment, I had the very same thing. As educators, we kind of look at that for the educational piece. I take away from any of the duties at all, it's just a question that we routinely ask. Dr. McCray, is that, are you good or you have something else?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Sroll?
I think comparatively, if you look at, like, to the military, like, I was, I wasn't sharp, but their sharp is, it's not a bachelor's degree required position. They have, you know, staff sergeant classes that just do the training and that's all it entails.
And they're going to be trained by the police department staff internally?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? That's it? All in favor? No, wait, did we make a motion?
No.
Nope, we didn't make a motion. Any motion for us?
May I make a motion that we approve to reclassify the positions of assistant fire marshal, crime analyst, and victim advocate of the new town footballs?
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Seeing everybody approved yes, the motion carries. All right, moving on, item E, nomination and appointment of residents to the following committee, that's under tab twelve. Thank you, Leanne, by the way. Connie Harden, Homelessness Advisory Committee, Jennifer Vivette, Appearance Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, Vivian Scott, Homelessness Advisory Committee, William Smith, Appearance Commission. Do we have a motion?
Motion, please.
Motion? Second, second. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion before we call the vote? All in favor? Seeing none approved, everybody voted yes. Motion carries. Last item, under New Businesses, Tab, Review and Existence of Delinquent Taxes for Year Twenty Twenty-Four, tab thirteen. Drew has this one. Anything finance, go to Drew.
This is the annual letter that we receive each year from the county and the board has to accept it, having accepted it. So this is an annual thing that we're required to do for you.
Drew, how much of this are we expecting to collect? All of it?
It would be nice if we could get all of it, but since I've been here the last five years, we usually collect around ninety-nine point six five percent of our profit tax.
And then what happens to that, that we don't collect?
That is a list that has not been collected as of the date of that letter. So they'll continue to collect through the rest of this year and ten years after.
I don't want it to be...
Get as much as possible, yes. If you look at the, your audit report in the statistical section, one of those schedules is the profit tax receipts that we've gotten, and it shows the last ten years and actually how much is left of what we've received. And I think if you go back ten years, it's like down to eight thousand dollars or less some of it. So we're, we'd be very well, but our citizens pay their profit taxes.
I remember last year, you know, I was worried about that, about this time and thinking, oh, we might have...
Until we set up, usually, or January, right at the end of the year. So collecting it is one thing. When we actually receive the funds is another, usually we run a deficit until we get to the end of the calendar.
May I make a motion to approve, or we accept the report of delinquent taxes for year twenty-four?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. All right, we're into committee liaisons update. This is the first committee liaison update for the year, as a lot of committees did not meet in the month of December. About all the committees, if they met, they met in January. And tonight we will hear the first set of updates. We'll start with Commissioner Brian Marley, Storage Preservation, and Rule Act.
Don't really have a lot to report. Excuse me. They, it was either the first or second meeting as a commission. So they're in the beginning stages of that commission process and must have a discussion of his own budget concerns for this upcoming budget year. So we'll hear a lot more back during the budget period.
All right. Next up, Commissioner Lee Scriver on Homelessness Advisory Committee.
Our homeless committee will have its first meeting on the eleventh. And I'm happy to report we have six members and the gentleman that was sitting right over there, he is the director of the relocation board for Cumberland County, and he's going to be filling out an application to come on the board as well. So that would make us a full committee of seven. And I am very tickled over this. Thank all of you who have filled out an application and joined this committee because it's a very important committee for all of us. And I'd want to thank the chief of police for appointing Captain Playboy to serve on our team too, so we all have a great day. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Next, Commissioner Legg on Appearance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I've most seen that one from the academy, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Next up, thank you, Commissioner Legg. Next up is Commissioner Joanne Scowall. She has a bunch of committees, I'm not sure how long this will be, but she'll begin.
So starting with the Veterans Affairs Committee, that meeting was the same evening. We had our other meeting, so I had someone go on my place, unfortunately. The Veterans Affairs Committee did not have a forum, so no meeting took place.
Commissioner Sroll, how many meetings have we gone now without a forum in these committees?
It's been quite a few, Mayor. Quite a few. I can't even tell you off the top of my head. In the last year, it's been more often no than yes.
How many people are needed for a forum?
For our committee, there's five members. We can, we get three to fill up at one time.
All right. Next.
I also have for the Cumberland County Air Quality Ambassadors Committee, so I have a chart, not like a, you guess anyone from the audience is going to be able to see this, but one of the big pollutants in the air is pollutant PM two point five. It's a very, very tiny particulate matter. It's been, usually it'll affect the air quality, it's not even from smoke or anything, it's just a very fine parcel that's in the air. Or the majority of the time, our air quality is good. It's very, very rarely do we get a highly unhealthy day or unhealthy presensive group, so we're usually hovering around good and moderate air quality. One of the programs that air quality is trying to do is get these EPA sensors. Hope Mills has one, it's actually on a person's actual property, it's personally owned, it's not owned by any government or school or anything like that. They're working on a loan program to loan out these loan sensors to different municipalities in different locations. The program, the way it's supposed to work is they had loaned out this sensor for a year. They would have to be able to monitor it if they want to check on it, they would have to have access to that sensor, so I'm working with them for that. Worst-case scenario, if I have to see about buying it, it's a hundred dollars. And like I said, citizens have them on their personal properties and it just monitors the air quality. There's a website, I don't have the link unfortunately, where you can actually go and pull up the locations where you see the actual particulate matter. Now, it's a big deal, and especially... Now, it's a big deal in especially really urban areas. Now, we don't have a lot of traffic. Now, if it went off of I ninety-five, you would see it a lot higher than it would be, say, on top of town hall. But there's going to be more information on that. That was air quality. Then I have my BAMBO pack transportation advisory committee. So we had our meeting, that was the day of the snowstorm, so I had a nice Zoom meeting. For this new year, we nominated a new chairperson and vice chair, our new chairperson is Councilman, Dino. I know his first name is Dino. It's one of the Fayetteville City Council members. I'm horrible. And the vice chair is county commissioner Patel. He was the vice chairman of the committee, so we went through that. A lot of the stuff for our agenda, we were just basically updating a lot of the different performance measures, like we adopted an NC DOT, targets for safety performance measures, some updated paperwork essentially. Let's see. A lot of this stuff, unfortunately, because it's so information heavy, here's like the packet. If anyone wants to go over it, I'd be more than happy to give them that information, but it's a lot to read off. But by all means, you get ahold of me and I can give you the actual packet to read through. It's a lot of information. Let's see, what's my other committee? Hope Mills area chamber of commerce, what is on? Okay, so the chamber of commerce, currently, we are working on, we are going to have the Women Means Business luncheon. It's still in the planning phases. To be, to be able to go to this luncheon, you have to be a member of the Hope Mills Chamber. So if you have questions about that, you can come talk to me. Also, one of the programs that I have the chamber partnering with, Parks and Rec, and then also this will benefit Artist Village. It's supposed to go live on the Parks and Rec website, the first annual Hope Mills fishing derby. And this will benefit the Artist Village. So I wanted to have a fishing derby for the longest time. I met with the Parks and Rec committee and I discussed it. I'm trying to have the actual fishing derby, all proceeds will go right to Artist Village because they're a nonprofit and, you know, it's a really good group. So June seventh, I'm going to hold the fishing derby. You'll get a T-shirt, the twenty-five dollar registration fee goes towards a T-shirt and then, but more information to follow on that. So just have that on your radars. The flyers will be published soon because I know people love fishing around here and this way I'm getting prizes donated, so that'll be something exciting and potentially looking at kayaks and some really nice fishing pools. So fishing derby, June seventh. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Mayor Progen Dr. McCray, cultural arts committee, crime movers. And I think Chance is going to talk about economic development. I think that's where we're going to roll it.
Yes, that's correct. I will go with the arts and culture committee first. The arts and culture committee, we were in collaboration with Artist Village, so we did help fund the Wonderful Life production. We decided to move them to the Parks and Rec building so that we can have more outreach from the community. We are currently working on and have been working on for several months and this is why I'm going to ask for the community to help. There's local places in the community where we can put murals. Businesses are places that are interested in having murals placed there. We are looking for artists. And so right now I have been working on an artist and we worked with the committee the last time we met on a Welcome to Hope Mills mural, but inside of the letters of Hope Mills, trying to put things inside of the letters that represent Hope Mills. And so we came up with a list, we were reaching out to some artists. We had some of us share some pictures from Lumperton. There was one in some other municipality right side of ours. I saw one from Rockingham. So we were just trying to come up with some different ideas for that. We had identified, there's a wall near Heritage Park and I'm referring to it as a wall because I've seen pictures of it, have not physically seen it, of trying to put a mural there. And we've also talked about doing the sidewalk going along the lake, but right now, nothing, no concept or nothing sticks. So we haven't had anything provided that we have been comfortable with. So then we just went back to the wall near Heritage Park. But again, if sometimes we don't have the idea, I don't know exactly what we want there, but that's the reason why we're like an artist, to kind of give us their ideas. And again, businesses that are open for artists to put a mural on their building or even the inside of buildings, I think could be really good if somebody was open to that. I think if we get one, we'll get more buy-in from the community. And I think when it comes to the arts and culture committee, that's about it. Crime movers is working on the event. The tentative date is March fifteenth. And right now, the theme is going to be ties and tiaras, cakes, and crowns. It was supposed to kind of replace the daddy daughter dance that we used to have at Hope Mills, but it looks like they tried to frame it where the daughter could come with her father, a young man could come with his mother, and it should be catered food and lots of fun. But I'll give you all more details about that soon and it should be a flyer that I'll share on social media to invite people to that event. They are in desperate need of members as well. We did have our chair that just resigned. She's moving on to work on her master's degree, but we really need some help and they were working on, we try to provide Valentine Day treats to the assistant living facilities in and around Hope Mills. One of the members has a child that goes to Rockfish and Penitentiary. I think they may, they probably have enough supplies and cars and goodies that they usually give to the assistant living facilities, but if they don't, I'll be letting people know and then they choose a day that they go and they present those gifts to the assistant living facilities. But that is all I have for them right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McCray. All right. Before I jump into mine, Chancellor Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The economic development committee meeting was held on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Some of the items that were discussed, the, one of the first projects that we undertake, or we're undertaking is the update of the Hope Mills Gateway Study. And just for the record, that is an economic development study that we're doing. It started off with as a project by NC Commerce, but it got stagnated during COVID. And so we felt that this committee would be perfect to actually reengage that study. Binders for the gateway study were distributed to committee members. There are two sections that are important, one of which is the updates that are tied to NC Commerce. Myself and planning director Emily Wyden met with Grace Lawrence from NC Commerce recently to actually provide her with the items needed to update the NC Commerce piece of it. The other piece that Mr. Modi spoke about with the update of the Southwest Plan, that will actually be done through this committee as well. The gateway study is a study that actually focuses on the three major gateways through Hope Mills along two ninety-five. First one is Black Chris Road area, second one is South Main near three oh one, the other one is across ninety-five at Chickenfoot Road. There's another piece we're doing too in terms of public engagement as a part of this gateway study. One of the areas that we stopped at because of COVID was the public engagement piece. We're working with the state of Fayetteville. Devin Heath, he's actually going to spearhead a survey that we're going to do for growth. So we're soliciting survey questions from committee members to get to Mr. Heath. He's going to spearhead leading the effort on the, the facilitation of the actual survey. And we also decided not to elect officers until the next meeting. We're in the process of doing that as well. So this is starting off to be a very, very powerful committee. We did update to the bylaws this evening. Just about everybody you could think of with influence is on this committee. And I think that I'm excited to see what we do after the gateway study with the next project. So that concludes my committee report for economic development.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. The collaboration is just, it's just robust with the members that's on this committee. The energy at the table, it just, you just have to be a part of it to witness all the discussions and what's going to get really happen with our economic development committee. We haven't scheduled the next meeting yet. We put a poll out to the members of exactly what we're looking at for the next one because we just updated the membership. So we're, once we get that, we'll put that one out. Okay, it's up to me now. Mayor's Coalition, this Friday is our next meeting, our first one for the year. It's going to be at Godwin at seven thirty. Meeting is at eight. There's only a couple of agenda, big agenda items, economic development update from Mr. Rob Patton, who is a member of our economic development committee. He will update the mayor's coalition. There are nine of us that are there. Roundtable discussion and comments from the coalition members and of course, a nice presentation on what's happening today at Fort Liberty from the Garrison Commander. Some of the Cumberland County Board, the members will be there as well. And that's all happening this Friday at Godwin. And all the minutes and agendas for all of our committees are posted on the website for anybody that wants to see them. They're all there. Parks and Rec committee meeting met on January twenty-seventh. I'll tell you, we've got a long list here. I'll summarize it though. It was well attended. I mean, a full chapel of folks that were there. First item they talked about were heritage park signs, the three that needed updating because of some clerical grammatical and spelling errors are being fixed and they are to be returned in two weeks. The committee approved phase two priority of the grant for five hundred thousand dollars to go forward. They also looked at recommending the two additional properties at the lake, which was approved tonight, the survey piece that Drew's been waiting on the board to approve. That came out also, so we're glad to see that. The new community center proposal, the committee unanimously approved to support that on the former golf course and to renovate the current Parks and Rec building into a senior citizen center. They talked about April fifth, opening day for the ball field, also the signs at the ball field for four hundred and forty dollars for profit and four hundred dollars for nonprofit businesses to go on, go on the ball field. I understand that's a, there's a lot of interest in, in this recommendation. April twenty-seventh, community yard, yard sale is going to happen and that has really grown over the years. More and more people are jumping on the community yard sale. The committee also approved the baseball complex on the Hodges property. They also approved having a public input meeting on the future of Ed Haring Park. The committee felt that it was most important, excuse me, for the neighborhood residents to weigh in on what they would like the residents to live in and those areas need to come in and voice their opinion on the future of what we're going to do with that park. Artist Village was brought up, the next show is going up in May. Peter and the Starcatcher, the partnership there between the town, Parks and Rec and Artist Village. As we know, the production in December, It's a Wonderful Life, was well, well attended. This show will be a little bit longer and all of those dates will be out soon. They are doing casting currently. So this is going to be a huge event for the town coming up in May. Lake number two was brought up. The recommendation is to develop Lake Number Two for a passive and nature trails. So that's something, that's a new item that we'll be discussing probably at the board retreat. Concession building, new design, either tear the thing down, it's existing now, or try to repair what's there, but that's a recommendation from the committee was to completely replace that building. It's been there forever and ever. If anybody's been there, you know that, that it does definitely need a serious amount of renovation. So that's going to be something that'll be looked at at the March sixth retreat as well. And then finally, Commissioner Scuola talked about her fishing derby at Lake and the committee approved her recommendation as well. They also, the last thing the committee wanted to look at was the community garden on the golf course. So there was a lot of discussion about, about that endeavor as well. Other than that, that was a really, really long meeting. I thought it was very informational and enjoyable to listen to all of the different conversations about Parks and Rec in our community. Okay, so that's all I have. We'll move right on to item nine.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to NC GS one four three dash three one eight point one one A six to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. We'll be back shortly, and I mean shortly. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Scuola.
Mayor, I'd like to move to seal the minutes of the closed session until such a time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no action was taken.
All right. Thank you very much. We're back in session. Commissioner Scuola just read the closed session part. Last item is item ten on our agenda. It is the reports and information items for the entire month of February. I wanted to add one, there's a joint events committee commission meeting on Thursday, this week, February sixth at six P M at the Campbell, Cumberland Chapel. All the committee meetings are here. I just wanted to point out that on February nineteenth, Monday at four thirty is a special meeting. It is our general obligation bond meeting where it is informational only. It will be presented by our finance director, Drew Holland, to the full board on the entire process of the bond. Then we'll go into our Cumberland County Legislative Delicates Special Meeting and that's over in the E O C Training Room in the Public Safety Building and that starts at six. So those are our next two big meetings here at town hall. We will not have a regular meeting on February seventeenth because we're having our delegates meeting with our delegate legislation members. I think all of them have applied to Congress, except maybe one or maybe two. So we should have a really good presentation. So staff comments? None? Nothing?
Oh, wait, sorry. Just really quick, you said February nineteenth and that meeting is, yeah, the seventeenth. And then also, I just wanted to provide a reminder for all of you that are committee liaison, that I have reached out to the committee chairs about submitting their budget request and I asked them to have that to me by February twenty-first for the March third meeting. So when you attend your February meetings, if you can just share that as a reminder.
That is correct because we have sent out an email to all the committees to have their recommended budget request for next year back to this board before March third. Because our retreat is March sixth, so that's the, that's the last reports that we need before we go into the retreat to consider, the retreat to consider next year's budget. Any other staff comments? We good? Going once, going twice? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion, we have a second?
Absolutely.
Hold on, Commissioner, go ahead.
I had a couple by the name of Mill who approached me way before us about. Um, a couple by the name of Mill, who approached me with the forest about the boat racer at the lake, the horse, or whatever that date was, it was, was you, so whoever's in that position, that you.
Boat racer?
Parks and Rec.
It used to be the, uh, carport boat race.
That's one, that's one.
Oh, yeah, that was years, that was some years, that was some years ago when we had the carport, because it was a partnership with V S W.
Yeah, it looked like it didn't grow, it was already round. Well, whoever's in the jury then, uh, I was a patient representative of, for Parks and Recreation, but would you see, would you get that going again?
Okay, it was, it was a good idea, it was well attended years ago, probably been five, eight, five, six years. You had to make your own carport boat.
And I had, had particular things you could do not do, and that helped my education a few.
Kids loved it, they really did, they enjoyed it.
Well, I enjoyed watching, and I enjoyed standing firm, watching them get their award while we had this whole message. You don't have to, excuse me, I'm really loving the weather, and, uh, I'm doing what I can to make it right.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Anything else? Is that it?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we adjourn.